Good evening, everybody. Call a meeting to order. And the... This is a public meeting regarding the Chelsea Master Plan. And Carlos Casia. How you pronounce that?
Casia.
Casia. The floor is yours, sir.
Can you hear me well? Is that better? Thank you for receiving us. We've been very excited to finally have a conversation with the planning board. And this session where we're going to present was... It's going to be the first opportunity for us to talk about what's the comp plan, what's the effort's been, and also what's the work that we've done so far, starting March this year. I'm sure Sarah has been informing you as part of the Siri Committee, but we're very happy to be here to present. My name is Carlos Cansacchia. I'm the senior urban planner and urban designer at UTIL. I'm accompanied by Tim Love, who is the principal in charge for this project. And I'm the project manager for the lead consultant for this plan. I'm going to run on what the plan focus is. And for orientation, every slide is both in Spanish and English. Starts in Spanish, but then always we'll have something in English next to it. What the plan focuses, what the work so far that we've done, then how all of that led to what we define values and vision, what are the values, and the final vision statement for the plan, and the next steps that we're following through. And please feel free to ask questions along the way. If not, we'll have later time for Q and A. So what the plan focuses. So the city of Chelsea has not had a comprehensive master plan since 1970. And that is three years before the last massive fire on West Chelsea. That's before receivership. That's at a moment where the city was in decline, when the population was shrinking. So the city has shifted entirely today. It's a growing city. It's a diverse city. So the plan is an opportunity to do three things. Well, the comprehensive plan will help us shape and create, one, a statement of shared values as a community. It's going to help the city define a strategic and equitable vision and aroma for the future. That is, where do we want the city to be in the next 15 years? And to define a framework to how to implement those community goals. How are we going to get there? In a way, and we keep being... Using this analogy with engagement, it's like drawing a treasure hunt map. Defining where we're starting, defining where we want to go, and then just through the path, then that's implementation, how we're going to get there. It's also very important to define what the comprehensive plan will not do, or what the comprehensive plan is not. The comprehensive plan will not provide us anything we write, but it will certainly tee up recommendations of how to change or how to push for a rezoning. It will not generate detailed topic area or place specific plans, but it will definitely create frameworks and guidelines of where those plans should go, which ones should be priority. And finally, it will not decide how resources will we expend, but the priorities and decision making defined on the implementation plan will definitely provide a basis for how to move forward.
Does it have review periods in this 15-year scope?
Sorry, again?
Does it have a review period, like in a 15-year scope, like after five years, 10 years?
Yes. Implementation plan will be the final, like, we need checkpoints and figuring out the best way to make sure we are on track. So how are we getting there? This is an overview of the schedule. We're effectively halfway through. We started with the phase one, which we call the Listening and Learning Phase, or the Link and Listening, sorry, which includes both defining what we call Chelsea today, and then the values, visions, and goals. That transitions to the visioning and testing, where we explore scenarios, where we start thinking of recommendations, which areas and which topics are emerging as the key priority. And then the third phase is where we develop, we revise, and we document and produce what effectively comes the plan. In our office, we really like to produce graphic, appealing, and urban design-oriented plans, documents that are not just a bunch of recommendations in words, but also things that are to a quality and a style that people will hopefully have, like, will want to have a copy of, because it will feel reflective on that document. In terms of engagement, we'll divide it, the same three phases is paired with an engagement phase. We're just wrapped up what we call the Somos Chelsea. We are Chelsea phase, where we joined the community and to learn and to tee up the stories with the data that we keep finding. We do our analysis, but every analysis is incomplete, and we don't have the human factor, and what are the stories behind all that data? The next engagement phase is what we're calling Nuestro Chelsea, our Chelsea, which will be... Okay, we know where we're starting. Where... What do we want our Chelsea to look like in the future? And finally, obviously, Palante, which will be just to go onward, like, revised, and then just energized towards the next 15 years for the city. Another important thing is the planning process is an opportunity to do four things: to engage the community and the city in a citywide conversation. It's an opportunity to stitch together paths and person plans, and this is particularly important for Chelsea, considering there hasn't been a plan in the last 50 years; to guide planning and policymaking, and to shape the physical development on the terms, and to better align with the community's vision and need. And they said particularly the stitching together is important, because the city of Chelsea has been doing a lot in the last 10 years. There's many things here that many of you have seen. There are plans and documents that should have been the result of a plan, right? Like, a plan would have recommended many of these to be produced. So Chelsea Palante onward is stitching them together and providing that umbrella vision also to... And framework towards the next 15 years. What we've done so far. We've been out in big events, small events, community conversations, workshops, surveys, but overall, we had three main engagement opportunities. Number one was the online survey, and "online" in quotations, because most of the survey responses, we got them actually by partnering with La Colaborativa and other organizations to be out on the streets. There were some door knocking, there were some phone banking happening, or attending to some of in-person events where people were actually helping the community to fill the survey in person, rather than just wait for people to file it online. We got 813 responses, which is, we believe, is a very good number. It's about 2% of the official population of the city, which is way beyond the average that we normally have seen in work that we've done, like this before. We got over 700 comments recollected in common cards, which, those were physical cards, where... That normally we use in in-person events. We had a booth at the library as well, where the library requested some of the cards, because they wanted to have a little space there. We went to community events, six different community events, and those cars focused on two main questions: what people... Knowing what people love about the city, and what people want to see in the future. And finally, we had three visioning workshops, one in Spanish, one in English, and one virtual, where in total, we had over 100 people in those three workshops, where we showed some of the analysis results, some of that is on the hallway here in City Hall, and where we had activities regarding housing, regarding safety, and questioning about what the priorities for the vision of Chelsea should be. And then other workshops. We had a workshop with the schools. We had a roundtable with different CBOs, community-based organizations in Chelsea. We had a community leaders workshop at La Colaborativa, and we are ongoing with some focus groups. I want to go straight to what are the main results we got from the community engagement. Out of the question, what people value the most of Chelsea? The five things that we noted as the most, that highlighted the most is, number one, how people feel like the city is convenient, that people really appreciate how much they can access easily, and it's not just commercial uses, but it's also services. It's also how much they can access help, how much they can access support when they feel that they're in need. We heard a lot of stories of people that, oh, I left Chelsea and came back, because in Chelsea, I did find, I do find the help I need, and I found a community that is conveniently available for me. Number two, and is related, is the strong community bonds the city has, and it's diverse culture and the people, for sure, but it's people... And this might sound like a cliche, but like, some cities don't really have that strong, like, self, like, produce community, like, safety net. We can really tell how much the community has worked in meeting together a safety net for themselves, so we really want to highlight that. Third, the community, and this is, again, related, fights and support each other, and they really trust in their leader, the leadership in the community, the organizations, and it's not by chance that there's such a density of community-based organizations in Chelsea. Finally, the value of the city as a gateway for working families, emphasis on the working families, and how proud that the people are of their city and the working class legacy of the city. And finally, even though there are few, a lot of value and pride of the public spaces, Mallory Park, Boston Park, like Washington Park, they were mentioned by name constantly. So for a city that we know doesn't have enough open space, people really value the ones that they have. What people want to see in the future, surprise, surprise, housing is number one concerning people's mind, that they want a housing that is available and affordable. And it is, it was mentioned across the spectrum, some demographics mention it more. The answers in Spanish in the survey, for example, 90% of the Spanish responses mention housing versus 50% of the English responses. That shows a little bit of the urgency there, and how housing for part of the population really is almost a crisis mode situation. Number two, safer and healthier neighborhoods. The community feels safe, but they don't necessarily feel always safe on the street. That sometimes became... At first, it became a bit of a contradiction for us when we were asking on the common cards, what do you love about your city? I feel safe. What do you want to see in the future? A safe city. And like, okay, let's go back. What's happening here? And what we learned is, like, they value how safe they feel in the community. They don't necessarily feel the same safety when they're walking on the street. So that has to be about crime, has to be about traffic, could be also federal agents on the street. Like, all of these has been a process also for us, right? Like, the plan, something that I was just discussing with some of our team the other day, we're trying to build a vision of hope in a time of fear, so a lot of the results that we get here have that undertone. So we're trying to be very sensitive of that. Finally, the last three things, economic opportunities for the people in Chelsea, particularly for youth, more access to green spaces and to the water. Water was mentioned across the board constantly. For a city that is surrounded by water, access to water is very limited. And better transportation. We also did some existing conditions analysis, mostly focused on demographics, housing, employment, transportation, public safety, and urban form. The top six that I'm going to share with you on existing conditions is, just like the comprehensive master plan from 1970 said, Chelsea City in decline, we can say Chelsea is a growing diverse gateway city. It's like, we have flipped the story. So the data is there, and many of these should not feel surprising for any of you, of course. It's just a way to phrase, because it's a Chelsea today, so you all know that this is true. Yeah.
Do you want me to zoom in?
Urban form, and I can... Actually, we'll have that particular map again in the future, but urban form relates to how the city is organized. Where are the residential uses, the retail, what is the... Beyond just the zoning is like, where are the nodes, where are the corridors, where like, a node means where the activity gets denser. And, for example, you... I'll make more emphasis when we get to that map. Yeah. Number two, housing is Chelsea's biggest challenge, and the... It may be a graver... The situation might be graver also than what the numbers say, because we also rely, a lot of our analysis relies on census, relies on the American Community Survey. And Chelsea, more than any other community in the Boston region, has not the most accurate numbers. It could be COVID in 2020, it is also the density of undocumented population, the low response rate, all of those things doesn't really show us the truth. The data doesn't really give us the extent of the crisis, and even the numbers are not necessarily good. Third, new development in Chelsea has been mostly large multifamilies, especially on the Everett Avenue area of the city, also along the highway. But in the last 15 years, the city has actually got 500 affordable workforce units. Fourth, Chelsea's residents earn less than the neighboring cities. It's an important thing also to consider, that only Chelsea residents earn 63% of what the greater Boston resident typically makes, and that matters regarding affordability when we talk about AMI. So what is 80% AMI for the city of Boston is not necessarily 80% AMI for Chelsea. The safety issues that are actually, and the map in the center at the bottom, is that is one of the safety maps, and we could say that it's mostly concentrated in downtown and very particular nodes, nodes related to commercial uses like Market Basket or the Home Depot. And then in terms of traffic, same thing. It's like very particular nodes, and of course, downtown, Belling Square and Broadway. And finally, the Chelsea's most transit-rich area, which is by the commuter rail, is also the area with less people, which by itself is an incredible opportunity. There's a mismatch there, a mismatch, but it's the lack of density there and the density of transportation is by itself an opportunity that the plan should be looking into. So now we get to the values ambition. So these are the first two things of what a comprehensive plan should be, the shared values, and then the strategic equitable vision for the future. And this diagram, what it shows is like, so we talk about the existing recent plans, the engagement, and the existing conditions. That would condense into defining needs and opportunities, but most importantly, what are the values? And by values, we mean are, in this case, are four values that pretty much are the ethos of the plan, the non-negotiables, the things that define, like, what are our values as a city moving forward in the next 15 years? And that leads to a vision statement. Vision statement is the treasure at the end of a map, right? The end zone, and that we are all going to be trying to achieve. So these are the four values I'm going to read one by one, and in... So these are the four values I'm going to read one by one in more detail. So number one, we had community solidarity. And I'm going to read them as is, because we put a lot of work on finding the right terminology. We worked with the steering committee on tuning up some of the words. But, so for community solidarity, we believe in community that uplifts everyone through strong networks, collaboration, and mutual aid. Our community groups and organizations are the backbone of the city's resilience and strength. They define Chelsea's character and help residents navigate challenges and opportunity. The next value is the pride in our cultural diversity. We celebrate Chelsea's rich historical heritage as a city of immigrants. This is a place where newcomers feel welcome and long-term residents feel a sense of belonging. We take pride in the city's multicultural character and generate opportunities to celebrate it. The third value that we defined was access to opportunities, where we value Chelsea's role as a gateway that connects residents to opportunities both within our city and throughout the greater Boston region. Our location, transportation connections, and community-based services ensure that families can access to what they need to build their futures. And finally, progress for everyone. We prioritize development that benefits people from and in Chelsea and preserves our city's working-class character. Everyone should be able to stay, put down roots, and have meaningful input in decisions that shape their community's future. So those four values that I just read are what, as I said, the non-negotiables, the things that we believe will allow us to, whenever we are a little bit lost, like, are we following the values that we define for the plan? And these four values lead to this vision, as I said, the end goal for the plan. By 2040, which is a very nice number from now in 15 years, by 2040, Chelsea is a vibrant city where families can stay, businesses prosper, and strong community networks help everyone thrive in safe and healthy neighborhoods. Our city continues to be a gateway for culture, diversity, and equity, drawing people from near and far. And what this statement does is nests, is nesting already the key topics that the plan is going to focus on. Housing, economic opportunity, support networks, safety, and environmental justice. Those are what we, based on the analysis and the engagement, we think are the five topics and themes that really will capture the priority or the things that we need to prioritize for the next 15 years. Support networks, it's a very particular one for Chelsea, where based on what I already talked about, the community-based organizations is not surprised, and we really want to highlight that in the plan. So what are the next steps? So as I said, we had the values and the vision. We're working on developing what are going to be the goals and specific themes out of these five, right? Like, what are the topics that we're hitting? And this leads us to create scenarios, ideas, and scenarios for future concepts, land use and urban design scenarios, and guiding principles for growth. So that's when we, okay, we know where we, we know what the end zone is, we know what the topics are. What are the specifics? Okay, where can we start making the most impact? And we start producing scenarios. Going to the map that Sarah, that you mentioned. So this is the mental map that we did on the existing conditions on the Chelsea today, where we look into what the layout of the city is, where the residential neighborhoods are, where the nodes, where the industrial uses. It kind of is a land use map, but it also has a little bit of, there's an urban design component in there, understanding where connections might happen. And what this leads now is to what we call like our focus areas, and I'll do it again. It's like, based on this map, where in the city do we need to really focus on transformation? Areas and transformational areas where we can explore large-scale holistic transformational, transformation that could change the character of the place. Then we have areas to enhance, finding opportunities to improve and elevate those areas without changing the character. And finally, the areas we want to maintain, maintaining its existing form and character, and to continue to improve in a more targeted, but in places where we see fit, but still protecting what it is there today. Some of the different things that happens in each of these areas, in the transformation areas is finding future transformation scenarios, major urban and urban design interventions, or recommendations for new land use or rezoning. Those are the red areas are like, we know those are the, if we were to prioritize some areas of the city for big transformation, are those blobs in red. Then the areas in yellow, and if you see, it's also, it's actually, some are industrial, some actually are downtown or Broadway, some are Carey Square or Washington Park and its connection across the highway. That, they're very different in itself, but they are areas where we want to just enhance. That means recommendations for targeted and Catholicic interventions, and protecting the existing strengths, like industrial areas that we want to continue to be industrial, but better. Commercial areas that we want the same thing, or nodes in the neighborhoods. And the maintain areas are places where we have, we want strategies to maintain infrastructure and public realm, recommendations for improving connectivity, and defining how can we have opportunities for infill development and preservation of the urban character. So we're taking this map, and that's where we started like, okay, for each of these different areas, we have different flavors of recommendations, right? And that's the work that we're about to start.
I've got a question. Have you, have we looked at Forbes, the biggest?
Yeah, so Forbes is like-
So I see it's there, but do you have an idea what to do with it?
Not yet, we have not, we have not got to that stage. We've identified as definitely a transformation area, an area that the city, Forbes, and of course, the area around the station and the area where the old tanks are, are like, the key areas of opportunity for Chelsea, right? So the plan is, it will highlight those areas as recommendations. And but as I said, the plan will not provide site-specific plans. This is a master plan, it's a citywide vision, but it will provide recommendations and guidelines. Okay, if you are doing a master plan for Forbes, or for West Chelsea, or for the area around Home Depot, these are the guiding principles that you should be, by you, I mean, the city should be aiming to follow. Yeah.
I would think that with the proposed FEMA infrastructure of the site that we've all been talking about a lot on Beecham Street, I would think that that would be under the transform category. At the end of Island and River, why isn't that colored red? Because there's, we already know that there is some transformation that's going to be happening, and it needs some more analysis.
That's a good question, and of course, this is preliminary. They're like, and as you see, the blobs are very, they're not defined by parcel. We're not following parcel lines here, it's areas can blend.
Well, just simply because it's part of the waterfront, it's not in the designated port area. So it's of high interest to a lot of people in this room, but I would-
Yeah, so-
Suggest that that goes in the transform category, just because of what we already know is planned to happen.
So for now, many of the enhanced areas in, where is today industrial? So industrial land use that is defined as enhanced right now is mostly as areas that the industrial uses could evolve, but not necessarily radically transform. So, and the border of where that is, is, as I said, can change. But we were, for now, we have highlighted the area around the station and all the corridors of Everett Avenue down to the city center as a more relevant and a more important transformation to steer to. And that will make, have a bigger impact for, than let's say, Second Street or Beecham Street. There are industrial uses today that maybe they're still going to be industrial uses tomorrow, but they're going to be different kind of industrial or enhanced industrial, so that therefore is like, there might not necessarily change radically like hopefully the area around the station would, right? Like, there around the station, hopefully in 15 years, is going to be a vibrant neighborhood. I don't know, but Station Square, we can start fantasizing that. But it becomes part of the city versus like, maybe Second Street or Beecham Street is like, maybe they're still going to have an industrial flavor, it's just an enhanced version of it. And again, preliminary, the blobs will shift. Have to be said that it's a lot of enhanced and transformational areas for such a small city because of the volume of industrial sites, for sure.
I'm a little confused, because if you look at like Seaport, which I'm not a big fan of, but that's urban development 101. Same thing with Assembly Square. That took years for that to, you know, they moved, the first thing they did was they moved the subway station over there, and then, you know, it blossomed, and now it's, you know, it was supposed to be in IKEA, and everybody said, no, 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 we can't have traffic, and now we have like, I don't know what the hell they think over there. So I'm a little confused as to why you are limiting yourself to what it could be. So if you look at Forbes, you know, like, or when I look at Forbes, I have sort of a different vision, and one of the reasons that it's so hard to develop is access. So you need to have a second access to there. And it costs, not off Route 16, I think it's 16. So you need to have two accesses there because of, there's only one access into there, and then also there's the housing project and stuff. The other thing that isn't addressed in this plan is schools. So what happened out like in Lexington, when they started to develop all the housing, is they did not plan, the school system got overwhelmed. Now, we're talking about a very wealthy community out there, which Ted, and it got very tumultuous with the school system because they had people who were living in these apartments that were designed for, you know, three people or maybe four, and they had families of six or seven, all children in, under the, you know, that could go into the school system. So they didn't address that. And in Cambridge, when they built all that stuff around Route 2, they didn't anticipate the traffic. I don't know why, Cambridge looks like hates, you know, anyway. So that's why it's a nightmare when you try to go to Whole Foods over in Route 2 and that kind of stuff, because they didn't anticipate, or didn't, not anticipate, or didn't deal with the traffic. So they built all these housing over there, and now it's a big clusterfuck. So I'm a little confused why the plan is not addressing very specific items that might happen. I don't mind the plan, I just think they're, you know, I-
Well, the plan hasn't get to this specific step. Like, right now, we are, as I said, halfway through. We landed on the vision and priority themes, that doesn't mean that they don't relate to, the other themes are off the table, right? Like, if we talk about housing, housing will talk about how much housing, what kind of housing, what effects that housing will have in the community, and that includes traffic, that includes schools. It would also, the protection or not of certain uses, like industrial and commercial uses, how that effect, what effect will that have with the commercial taxes of the city? And that therefore leads to funding for schools and other infrastructure. So that will get there when we get to the specific recommendations and the implementation. Like, okay, if we're going to do A, this is the effects of A, and therefore, we need to be careful, and so-
Well, like, when you look at Seaport, my biggest concern with Seaport is that, that one of the things that they really, first of all, it's going to sink. We won't even deal with the fact that it's going to sink. But it's, it's designed for incredibly wealthy people. And same thing with what happened over in East Boston. They're building incredibly wealthy at Little Pockets. And so what happens is, because that's what developers want, and it, and that's what I am most concerned about in Chelsea, and, you know, in Somerville, 20 years ago, you could buy a house for $350,000. Now, the average price in Somerville is a million dollars, and that was in 20 years. So that's basically two generations, if you think of generations. So if you're talking about a 15-year plan, and we're talking about housing and being a gateway community, it's, you know, part of that is, gets back to what you can afford, what you could afford to buy. So if you, and that's why it gets kind of tricky, that's why urban development is somewhat of an interesting and a thankless job at the same time. Because there are-
Yeah, I think like, let's move to, so I can invite Tim, the principal from UTIL, so we can sit down and have like, I would love to, because I think the goal for today, we will love to learn, like, after you see, you saw this, like, what are the things we should be taking care of, we can take notes about, and making sure that when we move, once, now that we're moving forward to recommendations, what are the things we definitely need to, to address? So this is actually the last slide. The next step for engagement is, we have an internal city survey that is ongoing. We want to learn, we already have a community-wide survey. We also want to have a specific conversation with the city staff, because at the end of the day, city staff is who is going to make this plan possible. We have a community leaders presentation tomorrow, actually, here. And we are in the process of either, we already have one focus group with business owners. And we have on the agenda in the next couple of weeks, focus groups on housing, safety, environmental justice, as in culture, and as I said, we already have some in economic development. And we are showing up at various community circles, depending on what, we're reaching out to more targeted community groups that are not as evidently available in normal ways. So like, we have one workshop with the faith community tomorrow at the Methodist Church. We're trying to have one with the mosque, so they can invite us in and have a conversation in Arabic, and so on. And as I said, we're there, September, it looks, it's halfway through, which is the existing conditions. And now the mosque form park comes, which is where all of this translates into this path towards the next 15 years for Chelsea. So we'll move to the table so we can have this back and forth, if that's okay.
While Carlos is going to organize, maybe to, I think all of the comments you made and questions you had are the questions for the next half of the plan. I think the point, though, is that the reason that cities need plans is because if you don't have a plan, then the real estate will market, market will decide on its own. So I think an important role of this plan is to steer the real estate market to specific areas in the city with potentially a new set of rules so that what the market delivers includes provisions for affordable housing, maybe includes better urban form, better design, and maybe a coordinated, more coordinated vision about how that development adds up. So that's the, I think that's one of the important purposes of a plan, and particularly in Chelsea, because the real estate market has already made it clear that it's very interested in building near the commuter rail station. So I think there's a particular-
Can the master plan recommend giving, or giving more authority to the zoning or in the planning board? Or have a new, like the BRA did, like they've done in Chicago and, you know, where there's, you know, Times Square actually is another brilliant thing. You know, there is lots of rules and regulations on how you get into Times Square, and that's why, you know, there's-
Yeah, I think, I think-
But is that something that the master plan has thought about, where you would have?
There will be recommendations in the plan about how the city might reorganize to get better outcomes from development. That might be recommendations for tweaks to how you frame your zoning rules. It might be recommendations for what the entitlements process looks like, who's involved, and what the steps are. You know, the Seaport started with a red blob on a map. It was first identified as a transformational development area in the 1990s in advance of all the rules happening. And so the first step is to claim that a community has- And so the first step is, is to claim that a community has the ambition to make a red blob be a place.
No, because the Seaport, first thing was that McCormick bought all the property in Seaport, all the parking lots. And then Menino wanted, they wanted to move Fenway over there. And then they wanted to move the Red Sox over. That was his original-
But in advance of that, there was a 1999-
Right, where Ed was there.
There was a master plan.
Yeah, when Ed Crowley was in-
And that was in response to the reaction against Fenway moving. And so the city then proactively said, we're not gonna let the market decide, we're gonna have a plan first.
Yes, but it was a lot. But the problem with that is, with me, is that the plan that they did do, I think, completely fails the city. It's like going over to Atlanta. It doesn't, it didn't honor Boston, it doesn't look anything like Boston. The most famous building you can't even see, which is the I C A, the courthouse, which was designed by Cobb, who also designed the John Hancock Tower with I M Pei. You can't even see these buildings. Now we have a series of no-name, kind of dull, maybe I'm being too harsh and it's possible, they am, buildings. And so, you know, whereas if you look at Assembly Square, which is interesting in the sense that it's a fake community, it's almost like going to Disneyland, not quite, but it is, you know, it's a fake community. But it's a community that I think works much better because you could, like, when you go over to Assembly, you'll hear many different dialects. You go over to Seaport, you don't hear many different dialects. You're, you're lucky if you don't get run over by a bicyclist as they get their martini going into the hotel. So-
Except for the wedding and graduation pictures at the waterfront, that, that's a very diverse crowd at the Seaport.
But I'm just saying, so the mayor of Somerville, who you can, can't like and there's issues with him, he had the vision to see what was gonna over there. Like the bringing mass general, bringing mass general over there, bringing, you know, it, it took, but that, you know, that's been going on for 20 years. Seaport's only been up for, what, 12 years?
That's right.
Right? So, and then, and then the thing that, so the thing that Walsh built over in East Boston, which has spectacular views, you know, you literally drive out a half a block and you won't be able to, you can't even, it's like, and that's my biggest concern is with the Forbes because that property has spectacular views. It's got, you know, one guy-
I think the difference is that Assembly is a single developer, it's federal realty. And, and they were able to curate that place almost like a shopping center owner. So the, the retail curation is geared to a much broader demographic. The, the city of Boston's goal with the Seaport was-
But that's why I think, that's why, I can't always forget the guy's name. That's what, that's a vision for, for a city manager to have. That's the vision that I like. Whereas, whereas Menino just let any ding dong go over there and build. So, you know, you may not like, you know, the power broker, but the guy, you know-
But that, you know, that, that, that would suggest then that potentially, and we haven't even gotten into the content yet, that to really make a strong, single vision along Everett Avenue from the center of Chelsea to the commuter rail station, preferably that would be a single developer that could function more like federality than letting all kinds of, I mean, the, the points that you're making then require high-level policy recommendations on a plan so the city knows where to go. But I think, I think your recommendations-
I mean, we don't, we don't wanna be like Robert Moses who built highways so nobody can drive on them. You know, and he, you know-
Right.
He did do something, no matter, but you-
(bell rings)
Fuck, I can't believe my phone. But you do sort of want more of, you know, the person who I admire most is white, he had the biggest vision. I mean, Faneel Hall is-
(bell rings)
Is the best, you know, kind of an interest-
Is that your phone?
Yeah, that's my phone, I'm sorry, I don't know why. I keep turning it off, it never works. I'll turn it off in a minute. So I'm just saying, I'm thinking of, if the master plan does have somebody with a, via a board, you don't want a single person to have a vision, but you want the, a board sort of to have a vision to say, this is, you know, and that's what I think some things in some cities have been very successful at, some cities have not.
Yeah, these are all, I think these are all good considerations, but again, we're about to launch into that kind of thinking and so-
Sorry, I don't mean to take-
We'll take that all into account. I think it's all good perspectives and it's really good precedent, too. I think now Greater Boston has all kinds of examples about transformative development, the good, bad, and the ugly, and we can learn from those. And maybe even reference some of those directly in the plan. So I, I think that's good feedback. Maybe we should take questions from other people.
I have a question for you. Do, do, who is the developer who specifically worked, sorry, I have a question for you in regards to the, the park spaces throughout essentially the central corridor that they replaced the big, you know, when the, when they took down the big dig that ran through the center of Boston, they put in the Parklets, the Greenway. Who was the, the company that did the urban greenscape planning for that in particular? Because it's very beautiful and it's very well done.
Initially, the Massachusetts Turnpike Authority was the implementer both of the subsurface highway, but also the, the creation of the street grid that wasn't there, that reconnected the streets where the, the green monster used to be. And then they commissioned a whole series of consultants over several versions of that plan until it landed on a plan that was accepted by the city, the B R A at the time, the Turnpike Authority, and all the advocates that were involved with that process over about a 10-year period. I was involved with that project for 10 years.
I just wondered if there was a specific sort of landscape company that they used for, for that development because the way they used both the green sprays, the, the natural materials, the design of that is, you know, it's, it's, it transformed that entire area and was incredibly well done. And it's, it is uplifting to see how well it's used in the city of Boston and, and just, I didn't know if it was a specific company that did that. And it's an excellent example, actually.
Amazingly, the Turnpike Authority commissioned a rough framework plan by a landscape architect, Carol Johnson and Associates, that just identified where the green spaces were and with a rough idea about what the programming would be along those green spaces. And then six or seven different landscape architects implemented it. But because the Turnpike Authority had a strong centralized team, a little bit like a bureaucratic version of Robert Moses, I guess, they, through their coordination of those individual projects, created the, the relative cohesiveness that you see today. So it, it, that, that was all possible because of a strong plan, a master plan, before the actual design contracts happened.
Is there more presentation or are we at the Q and A?
This is Q and A. Sometimes our, our answers are like presentations, but I, we'll keep them shorter.
So do we, do we have, I mean, it, it looks like we're still very, very loose on this. Do we have a, any sort of loose plan for how we wish to use greenscaping the city streets and, and our existing parks and any of our urban areas that create sort of this, this marrying of green space and, and our urban space together? Like so that we make our city more beautiful, more walkable, more integrated and better lit and, and incorporate the safeness as well?
Yeah, at first, well, first, the city just finished an update on their open space and recreation plan. I'm butchering the name, but an open space plan. That, that would be, for example, a, a natural outcome of a comprehensive master plan, like, oh, you need to update your, your open space plan. The city already did, except actually a very comprehensive plan. And so now the, the comprehensive master plan is adapting some of those, or will potentially adapt some of those recommendations, or not adapt. We'll embrace them and provide the, the overall framework that it connect them not just to open space, but like how that goes also to the other topics. We have not gotten to the specifics that you mentioned. Some of those we probably will not get because the, the open space plan are already addressing. And whatever we identified, like probably missing bits, particularly regarding to urban development or urban design beyond just open space, but like how, how to cater potential new development to provide more open space, that, that kind of stuff will come as a result of the recommendations.
I mean, this is something we've discussed and it's, 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 it's just a broad idea, but Everett Avenue from, you know, the middle of downtown to the commuter rail station, you know, is maybe the biggest opportunity to become a, a leafy, green boulevard and, and really one of the greatest streets in the city. Because it, it, you can't help but look at it and think about alternatives. And it's also quite a wide right of way. So as we get into opportunities, that has both functional and kind of placemaking potential. So next time you're there, imagine something.
So kind of changing topic here. What kind of consideration is being put into Chelsea's floodplains? So a ton of this area to, to transform or improve is in a FEMA floodplain, which is gonna increase construction costs, it's gonna increase insurance costs. And planning is great. I'm afraid of execution. Any people interested in constructing in Chelsea will see Chelsea as an expensive place to construct and opt for options outside of a floodplain. So what kind of considerations is going, is going to be put into mitigation?
Yeah, I think, I, you know, there's a, there's two answers to that. The market already is looking at the cost questions of that out of their own, their own interests. Flood insurance, business replacement insurance. I, I, I think one of the things we're doing in many communities now up and down the east coast is we're helping those communities with flood, flood regulations as a zoning overlay, which is that if you're within a mapped area, habitable spaces have to be at a particular elevation, critical building surfaces have to be at a critical elevation. And that work is already, I think, happening a little bit in the city, but we're gonna, we're gonna foreground that with some high-level recommendations and then, and then I'm sure a next step in the implementation plan. But I, I think it'll be then up to private investment to meet those resiliency regulations or not. And that's already happening on the East Boston waterfront, you know, at great expense and therefore resulting in expensive rents. The newer buildings have the ground floor built way up with seawalls and things because the market's made a bet that it's better to invest in those resiliency, you know, solutions and get people living there than to find other sites to build on. And so that'll be a discussion we probably have to have during this planning process. Does that answer your question?
Well, actually, I have two questions on that regard, just to back up Eric's question. Do we, when was, do we have any data on our floodplain issues? When was the last time that, that Chelsea flooded or that we've had to deal with?
It's down here.
Like what, what, what does that reality look like? I mean, that's a 100-year floodplain, so what do we have for data that, that says to us as we, as we, as we look at building our city? What does that data actually look like? When was the last time Chelsea flooded? In what capacity? How much? How much mitigation is there? How expensive is that? You know what I mean? What, what does that data actually look like for, for, do we have any, any real life numbers on this? Or is this just our estimation based on what we, what we think may happen?
Yeah, there, there's data there and we'll be diving into it. So we haven't yet, but I know there's, there's flooding issues-
Pretty much all the-
You know, Second, Becham, that whole area. And we, we did some planning for the city of Everett, just across the boundary and looked at that extensively. So there's data there and it'll lead to some very high-level observations and recommendations in this plan.
Yeah, and just to add to that, there definitely is data there and I'm sure we could check with our sustainability or resiliency manager, managers who might have more access to that data. But we also just recently, last year, did update our floodplain overlay district with the state's model floodplain district. So yeah, just, the state put out new FEMA flood maps and I think the changes to them were quite minuscule, but we did follow protocol and like update our zoning to be in-
I think it's more just, just understanding like what we really deal with in the city other than, than obviously projections. I'd love to see some sort of data about like, okay, so is it every 10 years we deal with stock? You know what I mean? Like what, what does that reality look like as we think about our plans and, and the city as a whole? Short-term and long-term, like what does the data look like so that, so that we can kind of have an idea of what we, and which areas specifically? I mean, we know Becham Street's always a problem, right? So that, that's a given. But there are other parts of Chelsea that are along the creek that aren't influenced by, they're not coastal, but they do have the water shed issues. So like what does that really look like? There are parts that, you know, up in, up in your neighborhood is, is, is it's more just water soakage and, and density of neighborhoods and lack of drainage. So you know what I mean? What, what are we, just understanding it better. So that's all.
I mean, the, the short answer is that the established historic residential neighborhoods are out of the floodplain and the industrial areas are. I mean, it, it, the, the hourglass shape of Chelsea is a, is a trace of the original landmass. And so that's, that's true in most community, waterfront communities, the industrial areas are in the flood zones.
So on, I think it's slide 32 or, yeah. First time I've ever seen that area, I guess it's close to Eastern Salt, flagged as an area to transform. So what kind of industry or attitude are you kind of seeing in that area?
Yeah, and this is one of the versions of the transformation and particularly the one that you're highlighting. We went back and forth, like, should that be yellow, should that be red? And, and, and again, this, this is still an iterative process where things that were flagged, were transformed, actually get, not demoted, but they're like, well, maybe it's, we don't have enough, we cannot have attention span for that many opportunities. So like, maybe it's just an enhance. So that area along the, the rail tracks are definitely, is definitely in, in that zone. So we identify Forbes for sure as a transform. So we were questioning like, what happens, how the connection between Forbes all the way down to the silver line along the tracks, is that an opportunity to, to also look more closely at, at how to transform and integrate the neighborhood better? Even potentially increase the connectivity across the tracks because right now, all that edge is, is, is an impossible thing to cross, right? So it must be very frustrating to like, see the silver line from across and then like, but to get there, you're still need to walk around. So like, so that's why it's there right now, the transformation. Potentially as a, as a better integration of mixed-use opportunities, especially north of the tracks, that it's still some industrial uses, mostly because it's so close to, to the residential uses. But yeah, it's, could very easily be Forbes side be transform and then the rest, just an enhancement, that, that also could be.
I wanted to commend your team on all of the outreach that you've done. I was at a lot of the events where, you know, you were having folks write in the cards and everything and, and there was a real concerted effort, I thought, to gather information and get people to express their opinions and I really appreciate that. And I feel like we got a taste of it here, but I'm wondering if either the board in particular or Chelsea residents in general can have access, maybe not to the raw data, that might be overwhelming, but to, in a little bit more detail than sort of in this presentation here, particularly since I think we have a lot of opinions up here. And I want to make sure that we get the information- And I want to make sure that we get the information that we need to make sure that we're speaking for the city as a whole.
Yes, we're still tying up some of the work to produce a more detailed report on that engagement. The survey provided, the survey and the common cards, but the common card's been handwritten. It's, the answer's shorter. But survey did give us some data inputs that are incredibly thorough, that we have flagged as like, we need to come back to this survey to look back for specifics because of course, the current processing that we did on the survey, like processing 813 responses, it's almost impossible to honor some of the very detailed answers that we got. So it's definitely in our plan to, when we move down the line for recommendations, to keep going back to that survey and then of course, future engagement to like, okay, there's specific comments about flooding, there's specific comments about traffic management, there's specific recommendations. People went out and was like, I would love to see this, this and that. It's like things that are not captured yet. They're captured on the topic, of course, but they're not specific enough yet. So we're going, we will definitely try to honor that, but we'll be putting out a report soon. It's, some of the slides that I, for the sake of time, I run fast, we're diving into that, right? So like, the survey, what are the most common topics that we saw? The top is in Spanish, the bottom is in English and Spanish. The three, very clear three topics were housing, vivienda, desarrollo mobilita económica, economic development, economic mobility, and then third, seguridad y salud to monetaria, safety and community health, right? So the Spanish responses cleared top three and then a very tight fourth versus the English responses were very more diverse, which, at the risk of iterating, it does speak of the nature of the challenge, right? For Spanish-speaking population, housing, jobs, and safety, the three things that are in their minds. But then when you get to more established, the English responses were 50% business owners versus only 6% of the Spanish responses. So if 50% of the English responses are homeowners, of course, now you have an opportunity to think about parks and to think about transportation and to think about community culture and historic preservation or to think about lounge use and zoning. So this is like the two realities the plan is going to be dealing with and we take that, I was just discussing this, I think it was this morning, like, the potential for the plan to, every topic to provide these two answers for these two questions. What happens for the now, for the crisis management and what happens for the long term?
Yeah, and I think that's exactly why I'd love to get a deeper dive. I appreciate that tonight is not necessarily the time for it, but I feel like there's probably so much in there that we could really dig our teeth into and make sure that, you know, we have the information that we need as a board to make the right decisions.
Yeah, just back, piggyback on that point, just this idea of having to address things in the crisis management mode. It's not how I want to make decisions and I just hope that, not just individual cases that we're seeing on the planning board, but just collectively, we'll have some vision that we can all defend for these cases that are coming at us in the near future. It's just, you know, it's tough making decisions in crisis mode. And we want to have some grander vision that we're defending. We need to know what we're defending. So that's really what I hope to get out of this.
Have you guys addressed the Tobin Bridge issue?
Well, do you think anything's going to happen in 15 years?
Actually, I do. I do. I do think something's going to happen in 15 years.
You're the most optimistic person in the room.
So I'm not saying, you know, so, just like I think something, you know, yeah, I do. Think something's going to happen, but I'm not saying I don't know what. I'm not a clairvoyant. I can't predict the future, otherwise I buy a lottery ticket. But so, but it is the monkey in the, it's the elephant in the room. And so it affects the city in a lot of different ways. So you can address, so you could address it like, if it stays, if it goes, if it, you know, you know, you could do like what they did at the Highlight in New York, you could do what they did in, I mean, you could put a bike path in like what they did in, I mean, there's lots of different things that you could do. I'm just saying, is it being addressed in the plan?
And they have started the process of planning for its eventual replacement. It's in early days, but.
I think, I think that there are a couple of things that we have considered, which is whatever the eventual solution, it's going to have to be pretty much in the right-of-way it's in now because it snakes through as a public right-of-way a lot of, you know, private parcel ownership. And even in this day and age, the idea that there'd be takings either to the left or right seem impossible. So then the question is, is the bridge replaced with a clearance that still works for the boats that have to navigate up the Mystic River, which means it's going to have to be another huge bridge? Or is it a tunnel? In which case, it would be a big dig-like project where the subsurface work would happen through some expensive miracle at the same time the bridge is running as far back under the viaduct until the bridge came back to grade. And then that would be a big cut in the ground, which would cause other problems, which is going over that cut rather than going above it. So I think.
Well, you could do what they did.
The plan might have an attitude about environmental justice issues and which solution, long-term, would lessen the impacts on the community. And we could, we could raise the point very generally in the plan, because we haven't started actually planning with a capital P yet, that the city should be at the table and have a significant presence and then whatever.
But the problem, right, that's what I'm saying. Because the big dig, in my opinion, is a big failure. First of all, it crippled the T because all the debt went to the T when it was done. It literally crippled the T. It is, doesn't work. Traffic is abysmal and everybody says, don't worry, the Zacon Bridge, the, is, I'm surprised it's still standing, in my opinion, because the architect who built it said that they used the wrong screws and wouldn't even come to the opening. So it will just, you know, so there's, there were a lot of issues with that besides the corruption and unfortunate death, which was incredibly sad. But in a field of things, you know, everybody likes the fact that the expressway got taken down. Everybody loves the Greenway. So that, but you know, the big dig went all over Massachusetts, not just in, you know, went to Medford, went to Somerville, went to, went to a lot of different places. So people just always, just think of the little Ted Williams Tunnel and the O'Neill Tunnel, but, you know, we'll never see that project again. The government will never give us that money. So I'm just trying to figure out what visions you can, we can realistically have. I mean, you know, I don't really think they're going to, they are talking about replacing, but I just didn't know if the plan addressed anything in the, that's all.
Yeah, I guess I'm jaded by the 10-plus years I've been involved with discussions about the Alston interchange, which is a much simpler project than the Tobin Bridge. And it's.
It's owned by Harvard.
It's back of the, you know.
You mean the university?
In spite of the fact that it's owned by Harvard.
Yeah, you mean the university that's nonprofit, but not a real estate developer?
Well, the point is that the discussions about the infrastructure and the solution have been going on for at least 10 years through up and down federal funding cycles. And that project is a much easier one than the Tobin Bridge. So I think it, I think the city in its plan should put its oars in the water about what it cares about and how it wants to participate, but that's all the city can do at this stage.
The other aspect of it that we need to think about that may happen within the next 15 years is as the bridge becomes less usable, either for repairs or for the, you know, beginnings of construction itself, we're going to have to have another game plan. And everyone who takes that bridge is going to be routed through another pathway. So that's the kind of thing that we should be integrating into this master plan.
Yeah, for sure, but at the same time, considering that just the planning of whatever that happens is multi, like, how many years just for planning? The comprehensive master plan for Chelsea cannot really provide, will not be able to provide with specifics on like, for a planning process that is not even done, right? So.
No, so what you're, no, that's fine. What you're saying is we're going to say that the bridge is there and that's, that's what I'm hearing you're saying, that.
That is the assumption that the bridge is there now and the bridge is likely to still be there in the next 10 to 15 years. So surely the plan will reference to the possibility of something happening with it and then what are.
And what the issues might be.
And what the issues might be and what the city's position should be on the decision-making. But by the time, the actual effects.
Or we could, instead of making it a parking lot, which is what everybody did, they made it because parking's always such a big issue. So what they did with it is they just made it a giant parking lot underneath the bridge. It would be nice if the master plan said, we should do something else besides make it a giant parking lot and we could, there's a lot, even if you keep the bridge up there, I actually was, one of the main reasons why I moved here, because I love the bridge so much and I like urban areas, there's lots, like, if you were thinking of housing and artists, you know, one of the things that zoning can do, which is to rezone, so that you could put, you know, artists down there, you could put Airbnbs down there, you could put a bike ramp down there, skateboard park, there's lots of different things that you could, you know, we could put a farmer's market down there because it's covered, it would be operational almost 10 months out of the year. I don't think anybody's going to go out there in January to pack out a tomato.
I went to a very good electronic party like a couple of weeks ago in the Atlantic Tobin. I wish more people had gone because it was a perfect venue for that.
Right, so I'm just saying, so if we're going to assume that the bridge is going to be there, then let's assume that we're going to, let's, you know, I mean, parking is always the number one issue. I swear to God, you could come in and say, I have the cure for cancer and someone's going to say, oh, well, where's the parking? And it's like, oh my God. So I understand parking's important and I get it that it's not going to go away. That I know won't go away in 10 years. People always think it's going to go away. It's not going to go away. Americans love their cars and they're going to keep them. So, but I just wanted to know if that was, that's all.
Yeah, that's a good comment.
I have a question for you in regards to, do we, the waterfront as it exists along Chelsea Creek, that's all federally owned, is that correct? Or is it not all federally owned along Chelsea Creek?
Yeah. It's.
Mystic and federal.
It's multiple owners.
Well, I think it comes in.
Or they're right.
It's, it has full port access because the bridge, when it's open, meets the Panamax international shipping regulations. But Eastern Minerals owns the salt pile and there's multiple owners along the edge.
Well, my question is, I know that Boston did a lot of horse trading with, the city of Boston did a lot of horse trading with owners and with the feds to negotiate ability to create walking areas along their waterfront and to create public access to the waterfront. Is this something we can address as a connected whole to our entire waterfront, potentially?
It's come up before in, that even Eastern Minerals did with their facility, but the issue is there's more ship-to-shore functions that happened, at least in that stretch, than happened with the Harbor Walk in Boston. There was no, there were no longer ship-to-shore industrial operations happening.
Uses, yeah.
Yeah, uses. I think that that, that's been looked at in the past and I think in terms of the Chelsea waterfront, there's been a whole history of harbor plans and DPA studies that have looked at that, I know, three or four in the last 15 years. So we'll resurface all of that and see if there's anything ripe for the taking.
One other point on that is that some of these technologies or industries are dying industries. So I think we need to think beyond, we need to think to the future where we don't have a salt pile because we don't need to salt roads anymore because cars are less relevant or we've come up with a new technology. It's absolutely outrageous that this is the technology we use and it's just an environmental detriment on multiple levels. And I hope that this process allows us to think a little bigger about what kind of industries should be phased out over time so that we can reclaim areas that are better used for some other purpose.
Any other questions?
Are there any guests with us tonight who would like to address this meeting? Ladies first.
We've got time on it.
Yeah, three minutes.
Oh, I won't even need that one.
Okay, and you have to tell us, tell us your name and where you live.
My name is Marlene Jennings and I live at 33 Breakwater Drive in Chelsea. Thank you very much for your presentation and your very interesting work. I really like it. Me, me, I have to say, I totally agree with you about the seaport. It's terrible. So, but we're never going to look like that, I'm sure. So I have, I have two questions. I'm curious to know if there, we are such a great melting pot of people, I wonder if there was an average age group? Did you have a wide variety of ages of people that were talking with you and they, so that we had all generations that were represented in your questions? That's what I wanted to know. Do you have any statistics on that or?
Is that the only question or like?
No, I do have one other question. And my other question is, is there anyone at the table with the negotiations for what's going on in Everett right now with the stadium? Is that in any way being addressed in your questions and concerns and in the entire project? Okay? Thank you.
I mean, it's definitely, I'll take the second one, which is a shorter answer probably first. It's on our radar and the city of Boston's very interested in that. And I think that we'll consider the impacts of the draw of something like that relative to, you know, origins and destinations and how it might impact Chelsea. I think it's good to put it back on our radar. We've discussed it before, the stadium.
And regarding the first question about the age group, and it's a follow-up to the, also the question of a more detailed report on the engagement. Yes, we are, pretty much the age distribution was pretty even, like, we tried really hard to make sure we got all the way from seniors to youth. We went to the high school. We targeted the high school in three occasions so we could hear from who will be inheriting this plan as their future and also making sure people would have less proficiency with online surveys to be also, had access to the survey. So overall, the distribution of age was, I don't have on top of my head like what the actual percentage was, but it was pretty even between all the way from youth to plus 65.
I have a quick question in regard to something brought up, which is, which was a great topic, which is to do with the fact that Everett has stuck giant, giant apartment buildings all along Route 16, which is a major access road for all the residents of Chelsea, including, you know, everything along from the school, Prattville, all the way to the backside Everett Avenue. And other than that, we have the bridge or through East Boston. And is there, is there anything we are doing to address them essentially having crowded the entire area with thousands of residents that need to drive to get to where they're going to go? And it will automatically impact the residents in Chelsea, no matter what we do going forward? And the buildings are done? The buildings are there?
Yeah.
And continuing to be built in addition.
I don't, there's nothing that you can do to make Everett stop. I don't, there's nothing that you can do to make Everett stop. They, they, you know, one of their goals, we weren't involved with that planning, was to increase tax revenue. And, and to, you know, they, they saw that, you know, market rate residential development is a net positive, and so they changed the zoning to make it happen.
It's an infrastructure issue, though, too, like, and as, as, I mean, as we look at it even on a state level, we have thousands more residents living in these regions, and where nothing has changed on an infrastructure level. So to get people from here to there, excepted as dramatic impact on Chelsea in particular.
Yeah, and, and one of the-
And it concerns me.
One of the important things for the, the big red area right in, on the station is, there's two scenarios that the city can take on how to address development there. One is still just see the development trickling down Everett, and then coming this way, and, or is flipping the, the story and take proactive action, like, what is it, steer the development in the terms that we want it, like, steer it in the scale and, and, and conditions that we want. And that in by itself could actually help in the long run, improve the infrastructure conditions with, for those apartments in Everett. If the connectivity to that station north feels, first of all, the station is improved, or, and, and the service is improved, the commuter rail, that, the potential of that commuter rail to actually feel, I was kinda joking, but actually, the idea of a, of a station square there, to, to really feel like, you don't need to drive down Route sixteen if you have a potentially seven-minute walk to the station, right? Right now, they don't do it, because it feels alien, it, and it feels so hostile. So that, the, putting all the eggs, not all the eggs, but the majority of the eggs on that basket, that is the station, and the potential of doing it, the way Chelsea wants it to, to be done, and not just wait for more gigantic, snaky buildings just to, like, eat it up.
Well, I love that idea, like restaurants and cafes around that area, it's a station, people walk to it, so then we can potentially turn it, like you said, to, to a net benefit for us.
And, and sometimes the solutions for transportation are not just transportation, it's, it's also urban design, and it's, it's improving connectivity, it's not just roads, right? The solution for parking might not be just providing more parking, it's also providing opportunities for people to consider walking ten minutes down the road rather than driving to Broadway, right? So, that, that's what the plan tries to, will try to do, to tackle issues in a multi-level, rather than just, okay, parking, we need more parking, well, maybe, maybe not.
And related to that, obviously, we can't control the MBTA, but what's the relationship between sort of this master plan, like, does the MBTA get involved in that? Can we, can we ask them for stuff?
Yeah, I think, I, I think that a, you know, that there's already consortium of city managers and mayors that are already meeting separately to consider the future of rail leaving North Station, a future electrification, potential future stops, what fair category you're in, you know, there's, there's, there's things that Chelsea can be clear about lobbying for, both with that consortium of other municipal leaders, but also with the T directly, especially if it's tied to academic development that the state might be interested in, too. If this is, if this is a state-recognized economic development area that has other benefits to the state, and there's an argument made to the elected officials, that argument, the kind of transit-oriented development argument, might then have some influence on some of the decisions the T makes. But we're, we're gonna have to, in the plan, create a narrative for that, a scaffolding for making those arguments. And that, that's what this plan does, it makes a, it makes an argument that has multiple audiences.
I think somebody else had a question?
Thank you very much. Sure, I state my name, address, Svetlana Bardeov, 325 Commandant's Way. Thank you very much for everything you're doing, it's great to have a plan and have a vision, so when we get lost, we can look at the vision and remind ourselves. I don't wanna talk too much about the love story with Americans and cars, because I have some issues that might have been induced by corporate interest, trying to portray that how we're gonna be happy in our cars, but looking at European cities and Japan and Assembly Square, we can see that it's extremely successful to cluster zones and create this cohesion in the community by allowing mixed-use zones with shops and everything. And that makes me think about the parking lot at Market Basket, and the hot pocket that it creates, and instead of having one parking garage and multiple users that are so close to the train station, we just have a big parking lot, that's what I'm against. I really want you to investigate a total percentage of industrial zones in Chelsea compared to the total land of the city. I don't think even Detroit has more industrial zones than Chelsea, and if cities are built for people, I think these people want some housing, affordable housing as well, but if we don't allow for more residential and mixed-use zones, the people are not gonna have a place to live, so please investigate the industrial zone percentage. I'm glad I heard about Tobin Bridge, I spoke to the people that work on it, they give it five years, so ten to fifteen is maybe too much, we don't know where it's gonna land, let's, let's plan for this. The parking lots and affordable housing, fear of gentrification, we can always maybe force the developers to dedicate a particular percentage of their buildings to affordable housing, or make them sellable, and not just make the new apartments to be rented, which doesn't allow for people to invest their money and gain some returns. And finally, what is happening with the quiet zone for the commuter rail, because this whole area is amazing, they're next to Market Basket, but it's a little bit noisy. So, thank you.
All good points.
Hello, Eddie Gaffney, 100 Commandant's Way. Thank you. Thanks, guys. I was really excited that you guys were selected to do the master plan, and love everything that you've been doing, and was, I've been going a lot over to Everett, and just learned everything that you guys have kind of started over there with ExxonMobil site, and the, you know, casino, and the stadium. I feel like, again, we're very unique, we're, our T stop's the only real T stop that's less than a half a mile away from these places. There might be one at Encore, but we don't know that yet. So one thing that, in that area, that, I know you guys did the Davis, or the ExxonMobil, big kind of master plan and site stuff there.
We did a very high level, when, when there was word that ExxonMobil was finally gonna leave after Conservation Law Foundation was pursuing them for a decade, we did a very high-level plan for the city to think about infrastructure, a phased infrastructure plan, and a kind of block structure to give the city more options, and really then talk to potential developers who maybe would have a slightly more mixed-use vision of the area. But we, we didn't do the specific planning for the stadium or the casino, but we, we helped the city prepare for ExxonMobil to leave, just to, to clarify.
Great, great, that, that's fantastic. I think part of what everybody's kind of saying, too, is, you know, I think that might be an opportunity where, because they are kind of making a new, whole new neighborhood, new roads, is that an opportunity where we could connect some of our roads, or, you know, have some more vehicle and pedestrian traffic that isn't just on, you know, Beecham Street and Second Street? It's like, we have these two or three long quarters, and there, and there's, there's really no connections at all. Also, in that area, too, I've been there longer than I wanted to for the seafood battle that we won, thank God. But one thing that I realized in that area, too, is, I feel like for the flooding, flooding issues, one solution that I thought of would, I think, make sense is, because it seems to me that Chelsea side is where it's lower, right? Carter Street, Second Street, even Beecham Street, it kind of, if you're looking down the street, it kind of dips down. I, I see it as an opportunity to, Chelsea, let's raise up the roads, sink all the utility and all that stuff underground, that gives the, each landowners the ability to raise up their grade to get out of the flood zone. And the, the nice thing that, I think, the easy way to achieve it, is you could open up the Market Street double tunnel covert, so it connects to that area that's behind the Amazon building in Everett. By doing that, I'm just gonna walk over the map a little bit, by doing that, you know, you could essentially-
You might be on the way.
Please. Here, this closer. You got it?
So, so-
It's not a roll, and I'm-
So on, you know, Market Street there, it, it really allows you to potentially, you know, do a high seawall on, on the Chelsea side, do a high seawall on the Everett side, and then you're done. Like, then that prevents the flooding on Chelsea, in which, which I understand, from going to all the Everett meetings, is they're kind of disregarding the whole flooding issue, and even the island end project that got killed, is, they're, they're just allowing the developers to raise their grade, so they don't have to deal with flooding. So I see it as, you know, if, if we don't do anything, and we just let it be, all that stuff's gonna be coming down into Chelsea, because they're gonna be higher, and it's gonna be draining down. The other thing that I wanted to talk about is the area over by Eastern Mineral and Salt Pile? Sorry, I'm going a little bit over, but this, I, real, real quick, it's, the, from, from what I, from what I understand, isn't Eastern Mineral bought a lot of land across the street and kind of created their own buffer? You know, is that, I mean, I think that's not right. I mean, that, I see that as a really opportunity for, I mean, housing, I mean, they actually, I think, a couple houses they burnt down, they would buy the land, and then it just, it's vacant. I feel like that's something that is a, you know, we should not have to do. I mean, I feel like that's a wasted opportunity, that they're just kind of buying their buffer and not really doing anything. So that's another area that I thought, I just wanted to share, I see as an issue. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Jerry Jennings, I live at 33 Breakwater Drive in Chelsea. Thank you very much for your presentation, thank you, planning board, for your interest in this. I just have a couple of practical things, you had mentioned that there had been some plans for the waterfront and port area, one is just three years old. And it's the Chelsea Creek Municipal Harbor Plan and Designated Port Area Master Plan.
Yes, we did that plan. We did that plan.
We worked on that plan.
We did that plan, we're very aware of that plan.
We're, we're aware of it, and, and I think that, that probably should be, you know, brought, brought back up in reference to getting a lot of good work in there. And just as a real practical matter, it's really hard to see these presentations if you're in the public, and maybe the city could spring for another one of these screens and face it, so that we could all read them. And, and I also have a great deal of trouble hearing, and I, I know this is pretty minor stuff to talk about in this meeting, but it is open to the public, and it'd be very helpful if we could see this, and is your presentation gonna be available on the city website? That also would be very helpful. And again, thank you very much, board, for your, your dedication and time. Thank you.
Totally agree with you on that point.
Good evening, March 22, 325 Commandant's Way. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, very good, and I liked it very much. I liked especially that you mentioned trees along Everett Avenue, so it's, it's, I liked how you, you integrated various diverse voices in, in putting all of this together. So I wanna, I wanna emphasize that the trees and the green spaces, basically, it would be great to see a strong emphasis on mitigating local impacts, when we all know Chelsea's history with environmental justice, especially regarding air quality and, and heat, addressing the neighborhood's urban heat island effect, which raises temperatures to twenty or twenty-two degrees higher than surrounding areas. So green, green spaces would help a lot, I, I guess, and would improve our well-being and resilience, the residents, and maybe making it more walkable in general, integrating safe pedestrian pathways, bike paths, and in general, accessible green spaces. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, can, I wanted to ask, just back to the Beecham Street route, is that federally protected because it is the food supply to the region? Was that the reason why it was, why FEMA got involved? Do you see, do you understand my question?
Uh, no.
Okay, what is the nature, my understanding was that the truck route that brings food to the region is federally protected, therefore FEMA was willing to, you know, pay, what I don't know, fifty percent of the cost of the climate, you know, the flood gate, the flood barrier that they were proposing? But I thought that was in, in the name of protecting the food supply to the region? Are you-
I'm not familiar, I know there are federally, federally protected truck routes in Chelsea, like Eastern Ave is one of those routes, I'm pretty sure. But as far as like the island and river project-
Willings in the region, which would be a continuation-
Yeah, I mean, we can, I can look into that, John might know more, just through his experience. But as far as like the island and river project, to make that area more flood resilient, I know there was just so much work and effort that went into that, that while a major funding source was cut from like the Trump administration, I think the planners are still like working to do as much as they can, and try to find alternative funding sources to, you know, make this project happen. But, yeah.
Yeah, I think the, I think the argument that it was an important truck route mooted at the top of the line for federal funding. So it was, it was, when, when municipalities or partnerships of municipalities or states apply for federal funding, they make a case that has to, that has to do with, you know, mission-critical economic development considerations, and I think that was the case that was made. Because it is true that while Everett and Chelsea combined have the highest percentage of industrial area within the core cities, those are also vital industrial areas. And so I think there's also an argument to be made to the state, you know, we're bearing the burden of, of the industrial portfolio that's making the whole economy work, and therefore acts, which I don't think has been quite clarified at the municipal level, but I think, I think Chelsea has a case to make.
Just in thinking of some of the changes that are gonna take place, including the development of the Docklands area, which would take over what was originally the produce area, the produce market and that whole region. So I'm wondering if maybe rerouting, that, that truck route would make sense, if we're gonna see all this, you know, the state-of-the-art development that's gonna be happening in Everett, are they even wanting a parade of trucks to be coming through? So I, you don't have to have an answer to that, but I think as part of this process, we should be thinking, is that the most logical way to root trucks through the city? Especially-
It's my understanding that the, any mixed-use development that's gonna happen in the former ExxonMobil world will not affect the wholesale markets as, as a strategic, you know, the, the wholesale markets there are, are vital to the region, until there's a coordinated plan to understand where they go, they're gonna stay there. And so I don't think, that's my understanding as of the last time I was involved with the discussions, but I, I, I think it's worth us looking into that as part of this planning effort, to be a little bit more aware of current thinking there. And so we'll, I think that could be one of our next steps, is to get better educated about what the current thinking is on the other side of the municipal boundary.
I, I think it could act as a blockade of sorts, preventing some growth from Everett coming into Chelsea. So I think it's important to create an infrastructure on the opposite side of it, without an expectation that anything from Everett is ever gonna like pass through that produce center.
I, I wanna triangulate that to the comment that the gentleman made, is that there's a lowland right here, and then Beecham runs up, and, and most of the ExxonMobil site, at least along Beecham, is at a much higher grade than when it dips down on the Chelsea side, and that in itself is keeping development, you know, up at, at a higher grade, because it does drop down quite dramatically on Beecham, right before you get to the municipal boundary. So I think-
Do we know what that acreage is?
What's that?
Do we know what that existing acreage is, that basically-
Over ExxonMobil?
No, well, the back end of where- No, well, the back end of where, where Everett ends essentially and where our, the, the produce part that, that Chelsea owns, what that acreage looks like? How, how much of it-
No, but it's, it's, uh, two-thirds of it is in Everett and a third of it is in Chelsea or vice versa. It's, the, the municipal boundary follows the old river path.
Yep.
Yeah. You can see it there. Number of acres, I don't know.
So they own most of it still, yep.
But something that we have definitely already discussed and is, uh, what, what relates to the west side of Chelsea is that the, there's Beecham, Second Street and Everett Avenue, right? And each, and each of them serve different purposes and the possibility of targeting Everett Avenue for, uh, a pedestrian, like make it part of the city. And, and, and then Second Street and Beecham-
And connect it to Broadway, too. Yep.
And they are still gonna be, uh, the tailgate, we'll, we'll be tailing with this industrial uses, but, uh, by creating that, uh, priorit- prioritization, prioritization, my God, I cannot speak English at this point, it's late at night. Uh, Everett Avenue, um, that, separating the, the uses of each of them, or the, the concept of what the, the purpose is gonna be is, is something we're looking into.
Yeah, and just to add on one thing, I think a lot of great points have been made by both board members and residents. Um, and I think a lot of the discussions around like, you know, infrastructure, how do we make the city more resilient, are like happening. Like, our DPW department is talking about the aging utility pipes that are like underground and how do we fix those. There are talks around how you make Eastern Ave more resilient, um, you know, how do we reimagine like Lower Broadway? Like, all these different things are happening, and I think what's great about the master plan is it tries to situate these conversations in a collective space and try to find, you know, kind of connections between them while also kind of creating the springboard for the city to move forward with. Um, so I just wanted to mention, a lot of these topics are being like talked about and discussed. They're just like very early on.
Yeah, but the, the hope is that these infrastructure, these inevitable, um, infrastructure projects can present an opportunity for some, um, you know, more thoughtful development that integrates the inter- infrastructure, but can be more than just, um, a floodgate, for instance. Sorry. A flood barrier.
Well, just one more thing that, we didn't get to talk about this tonight, and I'm sure you've probably considered it, is, is there a way to sort of also, especially around the perimeter of Chelsea, connect it as, on a bike level so that we can access Boston and Somerville in a much more, you know, sort of connected way and create, create Chelsea being, I mean, we're talking about being a gateway city, but, but truly a gateway city where we get to cycle from and to, and, you know what I mean? We connect to all of our, our neighbors and, and have it be, have it be a place where, you know, we're small. If you wanna hop your bike and cycle into work in the city, you can.
Yeah, definitely, a, a bike plan could be a recommendation to, like, to be developed as, after, after the plan. Particularly to connect to Neverland communities, the challenge is for sure that the edges, the edge of Chelsea goes through Eastern Marginal, then Beecham, and then, like, the essential bike connection between Chelsea and Everett is Beecham Street, which is-
Scary as hell.
I live in Somerville and I've, uh, personally, I've, I committed myself to commute to Chelsea in every potential mode, uh, just to understand it a little bit better. So I bike a couple of times, uh, all the way from Union Square all the way to City Hall a couple, uh, when the weather's being nice. Uh, and it is scary. It definitely is scary.
I've done a lot of it over the years and I'm, I'm, it's a, it's, it, it is, um, I would just love it to be a little bit more, um, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, simply put, you know, just, just to, like, we connect it and we make it a little safer, and yet at the same time, we obviously have to service the needs of moving people in and out and not lose lanes, et cetera. But just, just to have that be not taking your life in your hands would be awesome, too.
Yeah, there's not an incident, number of employees that work at the casino who bike along Beecham to go to work. Uh, because I, when I was doing the planning in, in Everett, I was doing it by bike, and so there's some bike traffic commuters that are headed to the casino and back, so.
Yeah, there's some cool lanes that connect, you know, once you get out onto, onto that backside of like, I think it's like Big Dexter Road-
Right.
-and you out by the casino, and then you can connect to all the Somerville and parts of Malden, too. And I just, I, I hope that we get a, sorry.
I just hope that we get a chance to, like, link all the cities and create essentially, you know, an entire greenway all the way up the coast, in, in a sense, or, or even a bike, you know, a fully comprehensive bike path that connects all the way through Boston, all the way into Chelsea, all the way out, would be, would be a lovely thing to incorporate into our master plan, in my humble opinion.
Um- We're not allowed to talk about bikes in Boston until after the November elections.
Uh, yeah, so I'm kind of changing topics here, but a single property owner is pretty critical to executing on any master plan, and that's Market Basket, probably owned by private equity sometime soon, I'd assume, given everything that's going on. Um, so what conversations are going on?
Well, I, I, I think first, I don't think our red transformative blob necessarily means that Market Basket has to leave or even parking that supports it. There's a lot of land there. And so I, 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 I think that, that's important messaging early on, because it's a pretty great Market Basket and, um, you know, people in Everett and beyond rely on it. I, I think, um, the, the plan is to, at a high level, engage with those key property owners, uh, along the way during this process and at least help them maintain an open mind, uh, because they're also gonna be making their own decisions about their properties, too. I mean, the, we make collective decisions about what we think the vision should be, but everybody who owns any parcel can also make their own decisions as long as the zoning supports whatever that vision is, I suppose. And so, um, it's important to fill people with other visions of their properties, maybe before they come up with their own. That's a little bit the role of planning, too, to inspire people to think about their properties maybe differently than they would outside of the context of a plan.
Yeah, um, at least on that note, I would say that this, it sounds like these discussions have been going on for decades with Market Basket to see if they're could, they'd be willing to do something with their site aside from keeping a sea of parking. Um, but I think those discussions are ongoing and may have been reinvigorated a little bit as Market Basket is doing their liquor store addition to the store. But I also just wanted to say, you know, as Carlos and Tim mentioned, they're only about halfway done in this process. They haven't even gotten into, like, the sort of visioning and imagining phase and getting into some of more of the details and specifics. So I'm thinking that's a couple of months more down the line, they'll probably come back to the planning board, do another update and kind of where things are at. Um, so this won't be the last conversation we have with them. I'll just mention that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Thanks for having us.
Can we, can we, can we forward a motion to conclude the meeting?
We can.
Excellent. I, um, make a motion to conclude the meeting.
Uh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There are none opposed.